This meeting is being recorded. Being recorded is Tuesday, November 10th at 2:00 PM. So we'll do a roll call. Westfall?
Here.
Fox is not. Hartman?
Here.
Dan here.
Oh, you are Greg. Oh, there you are. I was looking away. He popped up on me. Thanks. Roberts?
Here.
Norman?
Yes, here.
Bills?
Here.
Okay, before we get started, I want to reemphasize the rules of order. When we get into discussion, please raise your hand to be recognized. And once I recognize you, you say your piece. If I raise my hand, I'm doing it because we've gone off track or something. And please let me talk for just a little bit, okay?
Dan, could you explain how we raise our hands?
Like this?
Oh, okay. I thought you were talking about the little button.
No, just raise your-
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Got a motion to- Oh, no, don't use that motion. Got a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I would like to still make an amendment, a slight amendment to the agenda. And the amendment is to change the discussion order. It appears that the Dark Sky Initiative is the primary topic of discussion. But there is also Rich and Dawn to give an update. And it makes sense to me that they go first so that if the Dark Sky discussion gets too lengthy, that we don't cut off their input. So I'd just like to-
My thought was I was going to cut off Dark Skies to make sure they had enough time.
It's just a thought.
Anybody, is there a second to Richard's motion?
Well, point of order.
As I understand it, Richard just, as I understand, is there somebody else talking? As I understand it, Richard just proposed to move Dark Skies to the end of the topics. Is that what I, is that correct, Richard?
That's what I was asking for the commissioner to consider. And even though that Dan is going to make sure there's time, sometimes, you know, on both of Rich's and Dawn's presentation, that discussion might go. You know, I want to make sure they have time to get all of their discussion into the meeting.
How about if we, how about if we just relegate 20 minutes to each topic? And then stop at 20 minutes and say, okay, do we want to continue this and not do the rest?
I think that Dan had a good suggestion. He's going to make sure there's time. And I'm happy with whatever. I just want to make sure. Thank you.
Greg, you didn't hear my spiel. When you want to talk, please raise your hand in order. Because Dawn's been waiting to talk.
Recommend, for at least today, is to, for each of these topics, is to try and get down to a scope definition so that the commission can create a plan going forward to address each of the topics. One of the things that the mayor mentioned when she spoke to us last time was she didn't want these extending on and on and on forever. And I think if we have a plan to go forward, then it won't go on forever. And in order to create a plan, we need to understand, what is the objective for each of these initiatives?
Still, we got a motion on the table. Do I have a second? So I guess we continue on. So do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So moved.
And I'll second that.
So that's true. Got a motion to approve the minutes of October 27, 2020.
This is Richard again. And I noticed on the minutes that the city staff present did not include Crystal Dingler, the mayor. And I would approve these minutes if we include Crystal as city staff present.
Okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second as amended.
Do we have any public comment?
I did not receive any in writing. I'm not sure if, I think there's one citizen present.
Right, Marlene. Marlene, would you like to say something?
No public comment. Thank you.
So that would conclude public comment.
Okay, we're to the discussion on Dark Skies. And Richard will read that.
So I sent out a Word document that captured much of what I think is the first start, the first points to address in the Dark Skies. And my plan was just to go down, I asked several specific questions and just to go down that document and get to the rest of the commissioner's input on those questions. I'll also back up and say that for me, the most important question I would like to have resolved today, traditionally, the planning commission starts with some city's existing ordinance, and then we tweak it to fit our needs. And I'm hoping to get some direction on what city ordinance we want to adopt and tweak. As I've looked at them, I have my suggestion, but I'm eager to hear any other suggestions or which ordinance to start from.
Do you have a comment on that? Okay, I'll make a comment. I agree with you, Richard, on the two Malibu and canal. One thing that I saw in both those, they are fairly simple. And I think we need simple. I thought the Malibu one went a little bit too far in a couple areas, but I'd like to say we could tweak it however we want. We have to ensure when we come out with, we produce that the average citizen can understand. And I couldn't understand some of the stuff in Malibu one. And I, and they didn't have everything in the definitions either. So I think it's real critical that we keep it very simplistic.
Dan, I absolutely agree with you. I have, I have reread the Dark Skies model lighting ordinance. I've reread it at least six times and to include again this morning. And finally, after six times through it, it's starting to make some sense, but it's way too complex. There are some good points in it. And I love the Malibu's overall simplicity. And so what I'm hearing is, is one of the commissioner besides myself favoring the Malibu ordinance. And my plan then is to start to reformat that ordinance into what fits the rest of Ocean Shores ordinance format. And there are a few things, I think, in Dark Skies that are good. But where I'd like to, the next step I'd like to take in the discussion is, is I would like to hear from each commissioner who has an idea, what's your vision for both residential lighting and business district lighting? What, when you think of Dark Skies and how it impacts the city and the citizens, what would you like to see as, as just an overall loose vision? And then we adjust the ordinance to fit that vision consensus. So anybody who wants to start?
Eleanor?
One simple thing I saw that I really liked was keeping the light source within the property. And I think if we take a drive around town in the evening, which we did with the signs, that could clarify some points we may want to make or may want to draw attention to, may want to put in our ordinance. But I agree with, keep it simple as possible. See what we have and see what we need to work on. Does that make sense?
It doesn't. And you, it may be my heat, but you muffled as soon as you said, you said something about keep the lights off or keep the lights on as you opened your-
Keep, you're disappearing off my sound too. Keep the lights within your property.
Yes. I absolutely agree with that personally.
But I still think we need to see, what are we dealing with? Is that happening now? Should we take a look at the community before we forge forward? Because I think looking at the signs was, was a great eye opener for you and I. And I think that that may be the point to start at, what do we have and where do we need to go?
Tanya next, and then Rich.
Thank you. I like what Eleanor and Rich have said. I like the idea of keeping it simple. So I live on a lake, and across the lake, when somebody's spotlight comes on, it actually wakes me up at night. So I think this idea of shielding lights so they are forced to point downward is a really big element. And I'm also wondering if we need to have, within our zones, not just residential and business, but also a recognition of the environmental factors such as being on a lake, because that light really travels across the lake. So waterways and lakes might additionally need to be treated a little bit differently. But I think the big thing is just requiring the light to be shielded and to remain within someone's property. And I think that a citizen reporting mechanism would probably be adequate. If we had some code that required people to shield their lighting when their neighbors are complaining, that's really all we need. Right? That way, it's just up to your neighbors to, to report a problem.
Rich?
I'm mostly concerned about the fact that we talk here like our decisions will affect every single current resident. And I just don't think that's reasonable, that we are going to hypothetically change the rules right now. And everybody is, is affected. It's retroactive. So I think we have to be very careful about what we're trying to accomplish. I totally understand what Tanya's saying. But hypothetically, I don't know how we're supposed to control that neighbor from across the lake when that house is built and everything's done. I'm interested in something Richard said the last meeting about a light meter. And it would be very interesting to have that for our group. Because I know of homes that have, they don't have spotlights, they don't have floodlights, they just have front porch lights. And the light travels sideways. And I'm wondering if, just on a typical front porch light, if that light is even illegal based on the Dark Skies ordinances? Because I'm ignorant. I just don't know.
Dawn?
Yeah, I'm not sure that we should presuppose what impact we'll have before we even start putting together an ordinance. But I also think that we should, as we put this together, begin to think of gradual steps. And one of the steps that has occurred to me over the last four years that I've lived here, is that a number of the people who have homes here, second homes, and they're not here all the time, leave their lights on, presumably for security purposes. But one of the things that we learned from Dark Skies Initiative is that there is no evidence that leaving your lights on makes the home even more or less secure from crime and vandalism and so on. So I think what we can do is look to have, begin with education. You know, Rich has made a point of, you already have the lights, you can't force somebody to retroactively do them. I think ultimately that we may want to look at that. But we can start off with baby steps. Start off by educating the public in terms of the Dark Skies Initiative, why it's there, what to do with it, and, and start to seek voluntary compliance before you put in something that becomes more mandatory.
Eleanor? Yeah, Daniel?
Thank you. I like this hand raising thing. Anyhow, I think what Dawn is saying is good, but I would only support something like that if we actually created a phased-in structure. So for example, maybe we do education for three months and we do a little outreach, but then at some point, we actually have to have some mechanism that creates an impact that we can actually make a real change.
Greg, do you have anything?
You gonna call on me?
I'm curious to be going a little bit.
Well, this is a little frustrating. I've got no problem expressing what I call the, starting with the end in mind. It's a Stephen Covey thing. Start with the end in mind. And simply starting a dialogue that says, it tries, as Tanya just said, educate the community about the concerns about invasive lighting, if that's what you want to call it. But bottom line, I kind of come around to where Rich is. It's like, it's easy enough to say that this is our long-term goal. We want to eliminate invasive lighting. But we got to kind of work our way back to the here and now. And, you know, it's kind of hard to impose regulations on people who are, have owned property for years here. And regardless of their motives, I trust that their motives are good, but I don't know how we legislate forcing people to change all their lights, not immediately. Now, if it's, if it's, if it's a nuisance, like Tanya has, and all of us, I think all of us have examples of nuisance lighting. If it's a nuisance, then I maintain we've already got stuff on the books to deal with nuisance, even though bright lights has probably not been one of the many, 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 many things in this city that we've been unable to enforce. So my concern is really, how much time are we going to spend on creating another ordinance that the city just cannot enforce? So that's my thoughts about this whole thing. I, believe me, I got plenty of neighbors that have invasive lighting that has tempted me to bring out my BB gun, but I've never done that. I have nevertheless resorted to going to visit those neighbors and volunteer to bring a ladder to change the direction of their spotlights for them. And that's been a productive way of getting my neighbors to, to deal with things. But the neighbor that has a phosphor or sodium light that stays on, you know, 12 hours a day, it's a rental house, for one thing, and they're not going to change. So I'm kind of backing off to the big picture here. I think it's fine for us to start with the end in mind, end in mind, and tell, and, and get a dialogue going with the city about the need to change and to, to kind of express a vision about the future. And perhaps fall back to our, our existing ordinance about nuisance and include in the long list of nuisances, lights. Because I don't think lighting is one of the things that is in the current nuisance ordinance. It's my thoughts.
Richard?
Well, thank you. There's several things that have been addressed, and I want to try to hit on two or three of them. And Greg, I hear what both you and Rich are saying. And I also hear what Eleanor said, and I address that in the document that you all received. And so to go back, and I'll kind of start there. The light meter that other communities have used and that is approved by whatever the regulating national entity is, and it's, it's in that document, I don't remember, but it's a $250 light meter. And, and if, as Eleanor suggested, and as I suggest in that document, if the light shines down and is contained within your property boundaries, then nobody has an issue with it. The very opening page of the document I sent is a photograph I took of the light across the canal from me. And that light was so bright, literally, I could sit on my deck and read a book. I have another neighbor that's, that's on the other quadrant of the house, who a few nights ago, and there, they are part timers who are not here right now. And, and their two front porch lights were on, and they were as bright as an oncoming truck light on high beams. And so, so a very basic tenet that I've always believed in all of my adult life is, is your rights stop at my toenails. And if we all adhered to that philosophy, we wouldn't even be having this discussion. Somebody mentioned about lights and security. As a retired soldier, and, and I didn't spend any combat time, but I spent plenty of time in the training field, there's a, there's a reason that we do reduce lighting at nighttime in the military. And it's because bright glare causes your eyes to dilate, and you can't see in the dark. I was just reading, I don't know, yesterday or the day before, cops like dark skies because when there's a bright glare, they cannot see into the gloom. You know, so there's kind of two factors that goes on there. Let's take the parking lot at the convention center. That should be well lit, not like a football stadium, but well lit for security and safety as we're exiting the convention center at night. But the light should not be so bright that it's, it would serve as, as a high school or a college football stadium. So, so when the lights are that bright, you have to have some way to quantify how bright that is. And that goes back to the light meter. The standard that many communities have adopted is .01 lumens at your property boundary as either measured on a horizontal plane or on a, on a, I said that wrong, a horizontal plane, flat on the ground at your property line, or standing at the property line and holding light meter here in front, and how many lumens are hitting that light meter. And to put into perspective, there's a chart in that document. Point 01 is dark twilight, which is more light than the light in a full moon. And, and so when we're talking about light that's somewhere, that the light crossing your boundary line is somewhere around a little bit more light than happens at a full moon, then we are not being restrictive to any property owner. And we're being respectful, respectful of those persons who want to be able to see the night skies. So part of this ordinance, I, I'm very, very adamant on, needs to have a way to quantify how much light, and then a, a way to, to get the public's attention when you're in violation of that quantity. And as Rich has pointed out, and Greg has pointed out, that there needs to be some lag time. We're not going to pass this ordinance at 4:00 this afternoon and expect people to agree with it by 6:00. That several months of coming into compliance. And if the code is written so that new construction is in compliance, then we cover all of the bases. And Greg, you're right, there is nothing in the current nuisance ordinances about lights. And, and so I think rather than amend the nuisance ordinance, if we address light nuisance in this ordinance, might make more sense, because then all of the things are in one document. So that's what I've got to say at this point. And I, I'm eager to hear the rest of the, of the discussion.
Okay, we'll do Dawn first, and then Rich, and Greg, and then Eleanor.
Just a brief comment. Can I recommend that Richard bring to us a plan to go forward, taking in the concept that Greg mentioned of, what is the end objective ultimately in mind? And what are the steps that we take to get there? And what is the plan for this commission? Either just, you know, just education and then develop an ordinance? How long are we going to take to develop the ordinance? But a plan for this group to go forward. So Dan, may I address that before we go on?
Quickly.
So, so Dawn, that's precisely my, my plan, is to, is to come back at the next meeting with some bare bones of a plan. But before I can do that, I have to have some feedback of what we, the commission, wants to do. Otherwise, I could spend two weeks and 100 hours spinning my wheels and, and we're, and not have produced anything that anybody wants. So that's why I wanted to get a feel for what you, the rest of you guys want. I know what I want, but I'm not the planning commission. I just want commissioner. And, and, and this is a, it's a team effort.
Okay, we got it. Rich?
I had a little disadvantage, because I honestly don't know you folks very well. So I don't know how long you've been in Gray's Harbor. And, and so what I will appeal to you, and I'm a short timer in Gray's Harbor. I've only been here for 23 years. And about 20 in Ocean Shores as a property owner, on and off, and here and there and everywhere. I holistically want you to understand that, having been in Ocean Shores this long, we people are not educated on light being a problem. And that we're being rude to our neighbors because we have a light up. It's, it's honestly not in our DNA. I totally understand where even one of us on the board is probably very, very, very pro no lights, and others are, how do we get there? I have a home in Ocean, in Sun River, and that's probably as strict a light ordinance as you'll ever get in your life. It's challenging, but we, it grew up that way. It started that way. I totally see how we can come up with a plan with Richard's help to start with all new construction. That, that's a gimme. That's easy. But we have got to have an education process, because with people that have been in this town for a long time, it's going to be a massive revolt, because they don't think they're doing anything wrong. And we're acting like they're felons. So I myself am as big a light polluter as anybody, but because I cared for the things that Richard has said and Eleanor has said, I have gone, and I have conscientiously now repointed all of my lighting. I've even turned off some lighting. I had lighting because my wife is scared to death if I'm not home and she hears a noise. So I had perimeter lighting. I've amended all of that, because I do care how other people feel. But I got to tell you, I never knew I was being offensive. I never knew that I was being rude. So somebody that's maybe only been here three or four or five years and doesn't know the DNA of the, of our peninsula, you're coming from a different environment. And so please don't look at us as criminals. We're ignorant and don't know any better. But we can get better. But we need an education process to slowly assimilate all of these views to our public. But starting with the builders, that's, that's a no-brainer. Builders almost not, they're not going to- Builders almost not, they're not going to care. And the new homes could start having proper lighting and will work on everybody else.
Hey Greg?
Well, I agree with what Rich just said. This is a, if we're going to develop an ordinance, it should really affect new construction. And the city can model our objective for city properties in terms of investing in tolerable lighting fixtures. And of course, that's going to be expensive. But the other thing Rich emphasized was the role of education. So I'm going to just re-say what I said before with a few changes. We address dark skies in the comp plan. We maybe didn't do a very good job of creating the vision or the objective, the end in mind objective in the comp plan. Maybe we need to revise that. But I think we planted the seed in the comp plan about where we were going. We expressed as a city, even though it hadn't been approved, a desire to do something about it. The next step typically is that we create an ordinance concerning the implementation of that objective. The mayor told us, or at least in response to the question that I asked her about, is it okay for us to start working on ordinances that come from the comp plan? And she was not, didn't sound terribly supportive of that. But here we are, spent 30 minutes now talking about implementing something out of the comp plan that really requires an ordinance. Because if you don't have an ordinance, there's no way to enforce it. And that or our nuisance ordinance. So to me, procedurally, that's kind of what we've got to go through if we want to implement this dark sky initiative. And I think Rich is right on. We're, we're we're on shaky ground when we start trying to force existing landowners, I don't care how long they've been here, to comply with an ordinance, you know, that requires material modifications to their home. Shoot, we can't even get any ordinance for, you know, glorified double whites, which is much more important to me than dark skies. So procedurally, I think we've already started the process because we, it's in the comp plan. We need to develop an ordinance to implement that policy, even though the city council has not signed off on it, which is contrary to what I heard the mayor say. And then figure out about how we're going to grandfather in people like Rich who've lived here for 23 freaking years. I mean, I've lived here for 14. And, you know, I'm not crazy about going out and changing all my lights. But I think that it's certainly within the realm of possibilities to challenge people through the nuisance ordinance for offensive lighting. That's it.
Hey Eleanor?
I think there's a happy medium here. I don't think any one of us would suggest that we force people to go out and buy new light fixtures. We have a property that's deep into a wooded area, and we have no neighbors, which we may in the future. I have lights on the garage that appear to be shining down, does not stop my night vision of the sky. However, if someone moved in next door and decided that my lights were hitting the bedroom window, I think it would be reasonable to ask me to put a shield over the side of the light. I wouldn't change the light fixtures, but it would be reasonable to ask me to shade it or redirect it.
Before I go to Richard, I'd like to say a couple things. When we did the comp plan, we were, what's our, what's the income of people in Ocean Shores? If I remember right, 30% of the people are below the property line. So asking anybody to even maybe shield a light without providing them the funds or the field may be impossible. Now, in the case of Malibu, they came out and said, you've got X, Y, and Z time, or you have to follow the code. I don't think we can do that here. The other thing is, you know, we have a lot of single people here. I've got two neighbors that are in their 80s, they're single women. And they have their lights on every night because it gives them a comfort button. And I don't see how you can take that away from them. And are they a little bit bright? Well, I don't go with the sky street side. I go lake side. I don't have the issue with some of you guys, because I'm in the white part of the lake. I don't think any, any light. And both my neighbors on the side are very rude about their light. But I think we have to be very careful how we do this and how we all agree.
So to go back to Rich Hartman's comments, it's certainly not my intention, and I don't think any of our intention, to criminalize the longtime residents of Ocean Shores. I think that the dark skies and light pollution is an issue that it's time to address. And part of the reason it's time to address is because we are growing so fast and people are coming from communities that have a huge amount of light pollution. And it's my impression that those are the primary violators. I live down by the community club on Duck Lake Drive. And so my primary, when I drive at night, I'm either coming down Duck Lake Drive or I'm coming down the main drive through town, the middle block. So I don't see, I don't see that much serious light pollution. I liked Eleanor's suggestion about going out at nine o'clock, 9:30 at night and driving around the community. My perception, what I've seen, there's only a handful of lights that are serious problems. I can remember, what's the name of the, of the main street through town?
Point Brown?
What?
Point Brown or Ocean Shore.
I can remember a few months ago, that my wife and I were coming home on Point Brown going south. And there was a house on the left-hand side as we were going south. And it had a great big, I would think, a sodium halogen light that was 30 feet up in the air. And I couldn't see. But I almost had to get out and feel by braille to get past that light. The light was so bright. Those are the kinds of lights we're talking about. The neighbor who I have that picture on the document, that light, a week later, that light went off and has never come back on. The neighbor that I said on the other diagonal, I haven't seen that light on in a week. I don't know what changed for them. I have another neighbor, I have three neighbors that have had offensive lights. And I have another part-time neighbor who's moving here, who's here a lot more frequently. And they've also cut way down on their side porch light, which was a spotlight, which was aimed out horizontal instead of down. And so my bet is, is that 98% of all of the offensive lights could be corrected by simply redirecting the floodlight down instead of out and having an easy shield that could be easily adaptable, probably to most types of floodlights, that put that light down instead of out. So when I'm driving down the street and your porch lights are creating a glare that I can't see the deer in the street, that's a safety issue. And I don't think that any of us want people to go out and spend hundreds or thousands of dollars relighting their homes. But to correct those few houses to bring attention to, and correct those few houses, in order to bring attention to, we have to have an ordinance. And Greg, that's what this meeting is about. We are in the process of writing a draft ordinance to present to the city council about how to handle lights and whether we put nuisance lights under the nuisance ordinance or whether we put them under this ordinance. We're calling this a dark skies initiative, but it isn't a, in reality, it is the lighting ordinance for the city of Ocean Shores, which incorporates the dark sky initiative. So I see a soft, I see being able to drive down the street. And I like the fact that there's not a lot of light pollution through most neighborhoods. Like many people, I'm a little bit frustrated. It used to be, for example, up at the airport where you turn on to Duck Lake Drive, that you couldn't see the middle of the road. And so I had a hard time getting around that turn at night. And then the airport light got turned back on. And so the airport tower light illuminates that, yes.
Okay, we've got three people waiting to talk.
Okay, I'll shut up.
Okay. We're going to go with Sarah first. She's asked to speak first.
I just, I had something, and maybe it's just something that we could go towards because what Mr. Hartman's saying and Mr. Wells is saying are like two totally different things, but trying to get to the same place. As you guys all know, we have a very robust and attractive city website right now. We also have the Facebook page. And I think that while you work and the ordinance is going to city council along with the comp plan still not being approved or anything like that, it might be beneficial if we gather all of our thoughts based on Mr. Hartman's point on education. And we could put a really, really nice educating thing on both the website and both the Facebook page. And while you kind of go through the motions of what you want an ordinance to look like, or if it's necessary, and while the comp plan's being looked at after the city council, after the first of the year, at least this would get it out there. And like many people have said, Greg mentioned going to his neighbor and just saying, hey, I'll grab a ladder and move it for you if you want. It might help a large portion of people that may have offensive, as other people see it, lighting throughout the city while you guys work on your next direction. But at least it would kind of start the process on where everybody kind of wants to go, at least in the educating. Like there could be a really nice layout on the city's website and the Facebook page that kind of get the word out there and have people thinking, you know, could this perimeter light be offensive to my direct next door neighbor? Or do I have spotlights out my back window because people climb up the jetty walls? So it's just a suggestion of something you could do in the interim while you're kind of looking into all the things that you would have to look at for an ordinance. Just, that's my little bit.
That's a good idea.
Okay, first Tanya, and then Rich.
Here's your opinion.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Sorry, I have to call in on the phone because my internet's kind of bad. But I like what Sarah said. I think that's a wonderful, awesome suggestion for taking action and being really effective right away. So I have a question about that. So the question is, will the city help us and how do we make that happen? So that's just something I want to kind of put out there that we need to sort out, maybe in an email later. The second thing is that I would like to take a big step back and think about what we're doing with the planning commission. Why are we here? What is our overall goal? As I understand it, we are trying to unify and improve the city. And I think that we need to all ask what kind of city we want to live in. Everyone here has said that they don't really appreciate certain lighting. So I think it would benefit all of us to go ahead and do something to address it. And I think, I just want to ask if that's where everyone else is at as well.
Hey Rich?
I don't have a direct response to her point. What I was going to refer to was to Richard again. You're taking a stance that's pretty reasonable. Hey, can you take the lights that you have and point them down instead of pointing them straight out? In other communities, and again, I'll keep saying Sun River, those floodlights, they're not even allowed. I don't care which way they're pointing. They're not even legal. So if our main stance is just to educate and then to help, as you said before, keep light on the property, but not outlawing certain types of light, then I think we've got a long-term direction we can go. But some of those lights in other communities, and I did not read the Malibu one. Floodlights are not even allowed, no matter what.
Let me get back to Tanya for a second. Did you want a response from us, Tanya? Did you ask a question?
Thanks, Dan.
Sorry, guys. Okay, I appreciate that a lot. I just kind of want to make sure that we're all, number one, in agreement about what we're trying to do. This idea that we're humming and hawing about if we're doing an ordinance is a little bit frustrating because I feel like if we're not, then what exactly are we hoping to achieve here? And if that's not where everyone else's mind is at, I would like to know that. So yes, I would like a, just a check in.
I think the things that Sarah said and Rich's last comment kind of go to the comments that I made. I don't know that we need to jump into an ordinance immediately. I think that that goes back to my recommendation of let's develop a plan to move forward using Greg's idea of what is our ultimate goal. But we have steps along the way, beginning with education. Sarah's suggestion about the website is, the city's website is a good start. So I guess my issue is, just because we have dark skies initiative in the comp plan doesn't mean we have to jump in and create an ordinance immediately. What it does mean is, we need to develop a plan that we can encourage the city to implement, beginning with, let's say, education is one example, but a gradual movement towards improving, towards the dark skies initiative concept. And that's what I'm recommending that Richard come back with, is a plan that creates those steps for us to react to.
Greg, did you have your hand up?
No, I support what Dawn just said.
Okay, Richard?
Oh, I was trying to make a note, maybe get my thought reorganized here. I really like the idea that Sarah presented about putting an education thing up on the city's website. I think that's a great, a great step. I hear what Dawn is saying, but what I will respond to that is that ultimately, there is always some percentage of people in a population, in a community that just want to poke you in the eye. They just want to create chaos. And an ordinance is necessary in order to deal with those people. But to speak with a metaphor momentarily, the city passed a deer ordinance. And I don't know a single person in this community that wants to go put Sally in jail because she fed a deer an apple. But on the other hand, when Sam puts out six bushel baskets of apples every day, and he's on my property, he's my adjoining property, I've got all of that exorbitant deer traffic into my yard. And deer can cause a lot of problems. And so the ordinance is necessary to deal with that poke you in the eye person. And what I think realistically, when we pass, when the city passes an ordinance, that we will get a very similar response as we got to the will get a very similar response as we got to the deer. That, that 99% of the people are going to comply. And, and the other 1%, sometimes they need to be spanked, and the law's the only way to spank them. And, and so, so I really like Dawn's idea of creating a plan about how to educate and Sarah posting it on the website, but moving in the direction of an ordinance. And my objective today is to get some guidance. So, one of the other questions I'd like to ask before we get too far afield is, in the, the, the model lighting ordinance, that there are five lighting zones, zero through four. And I think that the first three of those lighting zones are useful to this community. Do we want to incorporate lighting zones? Has anybody else read the... Those being zones into what we're doing, I move forward, I hope to have some direction, just as Nick Bird was asking direction last night, on my next step on, on this, this drainage ditch, I need some guidance from you about what direction we want to go. And, and I'm eager to put in the work to get there because I'm bored silly. And this gives me something meaningful to do besides watching Netflix reruns. So that's my thought. But that's, that's my thought.
Maybe we have any comments on the lighting zone? Greg?
Too far in the weeds for me. I mean, we, I'm a process guy. And I think our job is to do things legally, procedurally, and, you know, we've got some good ideas about how to jumpstart this whole initiative. Sarah's idea was great. It's a good way for us to get started. But I think, Richard, you have a tendency to get into the, the weeds of implementation. And I, I gotta learn a whole lot before we start talking about zones and the details. Tanya asked the question, are we gonna write an ordinance or not? That, in essence, is what we're about. That's typically what we would be doing at this stage had we had a approved comp plan. We don't have an approved comp plan. And the mayor said she didn't want us working on ordinances for the unapproved comp plan. But she, at the same time, brought up this dark skies thing and said, we should work on that. So, Richard, I think it would be great if you would give us kind of a step-by-step of what do we need to do to get to an ordinance and have Sarah and you or others who want to do that, or entity, come around to understanding that we should all be a little bit more sensitive about our outdoor lighting. Does that make sense?
Yeah, let me just say a quick thing about the zones. In looking at the other two documents, Malibu and Kennewick, I don't believe they use those zones in there. They did, they use, not much. And I, I think it's confusing. And I, I don't think we can do that. I think you can make the ordinance much simpler. I think Kennewick's is very simple. And, so we get around to the ordinance part, I, I think I would tend to maybe use Kennewick as maybe the model. But I do like the educational thing, and I think we ought to go after that. And that document could help everybody and make the ordinance really easy to do.
So, so first, you said, and I'm trying, I couldn't hear, was it Kennewick is the other ordinance that you?
Yeah, Malibu and Kennewick are the two ones that I thought were pretty good. And they're both pretty simple. But I think Malibu goes over the top in a couple of things, like they say you have to comply by XXX. And I think Kennewick is very simple. And I think we need simple.
I, I agree, we need simple. And, and, and in response to Greg, what I would say, again, I like, I like metaphors because they make sense to me. So, we, we can say in Ocean Shores, don't speed. And when I lived in Germany for, for, for two different tours, for a total of seven years, everywhere I drove on the freeway, I drove 100-plus miles an hour. That was the speed limit. And so when you say don't speed, to me, that meant, okay, keep it under 80, or keeping, you know, keep it, keep it between 80 and 100. And, and, and 80 down Duck Lake Drive might be a bit much. So, so you have to define things, and the ordinance provides that definition. So, so I want to move towards defining the ordinance because that also defines, I think, about, about what is we're trying, we're trying to do. I've, I've got a lot of ideas circulating in, in my head, and I will start working on them. But the most important idea is, is, and the first direction I want to take with all of your consensus, is, is to come back with, with the bones, the start of what can we post on the website to start educating people about dark skies and respecting your neighbor's desire to see the stars? The last thing I'll say is, I can remember as, as a young teenager living in Ballard, I can remember walking up to the grocery store one evening, and I could see the Milky Way. And, 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 and I can't see the Milky Way from downtown Ocean Shores right now.
You'll never be able to see the Milky Way from Ocean Shores. We have way too much moisture in the atmosphere.
Well, there are, there are nights when, when the sky's clear. But my point is, is, is that worldwide, light pollution is becoming an increasing problem. And it's not just, it's not just a problem for people, it's a problem for all of the animals that, that live and share our community. We are in the migratory pathway of two major bird migrations every year. Millions of birds fly through our dark skies, through our skyways. And, and the science evidence is clear that light pollution affects those migrating birds adversely. Light pollution affects the, the wildlife that lives here on the peninsula. So it's not just consideration for the, for, for your neighbor, it's consideration, we're stewards of the land for the next generation. And, and this dark sky initiative is part of that good stewardship, I think. It's a piece of...
I don't disagree, Richard. I just, let's just, let's, let's start the process. If you want to draft some, some ordinances for us to consider, Dot, Dan recommended the Kennewick as a good starting point. That makes sense to me. It's local, it's not too over the top. Let's start there and work our way through it, but simultaneously, see if we can help put some educational material up on the new website. I think that sounds like a plan to me.
I would think we'd want to concentrate on the educational stuff first and then do the ordinance.
I, I, I hear that. I hear that, and that's the direction I'm going to step off on. You know, as I start working on this, probably starting sometime tomorrow or, or something. I think that education and the website is, is the ideal place to start.
I'm fine with that.
Any other comments? Yeah, Richard, do you have enough to start working on?
Let me just, let me just run down my notes here and see if there's anything that... Here's, here's a note, we want to adopt a 3,000-degree Kelvin color temperature. And if you have read this document that was provided, the whiter the light is, the more intense blue is in that light spectrum, and blue is the problem. And when the lights outside, when you ask them to be 3,000 Kelvin or less, then it keeps that, it, it limits or, or reduces the amount of blue in the light. So do we want to mention 3,000 Kelvin anywhere in this whole program, education?
I don't. I don't.
I, I, I know, I know that, that, that's pretty, pretty far down in the weeds, so is 25 miles an hour speed limit down in the weeds. And, and 25 mile an hour speed limit is, is, it gives me a yardstick to measure by, and 3,000 Kelvin gives me a yardstick to measure by. And, and, and at some point, measurements are important.
I'm fine.
I think the keep it simple is the key here. Most people don't understand those terms, don't want to understand them. And I, I think we need to just kind of come down to earth and realize where we live, what people understand, and what they're willing to accept.
So, I have one more, one more question to ask the group.
Hey, Richard, I'd like to, I'd like to comment on that.
Okay, please.
I think we have to, we have to put it in terms that people understand, like Eleanor said. So if you go to Home Depot and you, and you pick a light bulb package up, what does it tell you? Tells you how many lumens?
And, and, and I think that modern lights are also telling you what the Kelvin is, but I'm not sure of that. But I hear what you're saying. And, and the chart provided in this document shows where 3,000 Kelvin is, but it may be too much for where we're at, and, and, and it can only be changed later. So I, I hear that.
I couldn't understand that. I mean, and I went out on Home Depot looking at, at light bulbs. I was looking for lights, light bulbs, I was trying to do the whole thing. And the thing that I saw on the website is lumens.
Is...
Lumens.
Lumen. So, so foot candle lumens are, are, are two words that mean the same thing. I have one more question to, to ask, and that is, should flashy blinking or unusually high-intensity sign lights be allowed?
Comment on that?
Okay.
Why don't we defer that to the sign ordinance project? I think there is a crossover between dark skies and the signs, and, and in particular, those signs with the, the bright lights, LEDs or whatever they are, like, like the ones out on Highway 105. So, I would defer the sign issue to the signs project.
Absolutely.
I, I'm, I'm good with that. I, I, it was, it was someplace that I read in one of the ordinances, and I said it's a, it's a question to ask because at this point, I'm just wanting to be pointed in the right direction. So, so that, that was a, that was a good comment. Thank you, Dawn.
Hey, you have any more comments on that? Please remember to raise your hand so we don't talk over each other. Okay, I guess we're done with dark skies for right now. So, next thing on the agenda was signing. So we'll have Rich's on that, but where are you at, Rich?
Well, I wasn't trying to reinvent the wheel. I just know that on the other Economic Development Group I'm on, they, they're worried about signage and what we can do to help businesses. And so the three areas that I was focused on from the task force was, I'm assuming, Dawn, you sent this out to everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
With the email that I sent you, you didn't send to everybody else?
I don't believe I did.
Okay. Well, then you're all in the dark. What I had was a email that showed the three different types of signs that we were discussing. There you go. How's that? Isn't that great? The top one's the A board signs. And the questions about that were, how do we address those? They're already in the signed ordinance, but there's a lot of questions about, for example, how many could a business have? How far away from the business could they put these? How long can they be up? Do they need to be taken down at night? And so that, that's one simple sign and one simple task if we want to get more specific. For example, depending on what we would say, you know, quote, how far away from their business can these signs be? If, if we're not specific, then that wouldn't rule out somebody at Four Corners having a sign about their, you know, marijuana business in downtown Ocean Shores, right? We've got to be specific about what we want to accomplish there. The, the other signs that I have up there, sorry.
Well, we can see them.
Okay. Realist, real estate developments. Other towns allow real estate developers to have information and directional signs to their development. I'm sure every town has a definition of what is a development. Is it one house? Is it five houses? Is it 10 houses? For discussion, I would say that you probably wouldn't want to entertain letting developers put up signs unless maybe it was 10 houses or so. Maybe, you know, you can play with that. But it allows them to get people to their developments. So if we want to be obvious, we could talk about Oe Hut. They're all the way at the south end of town. And if you come into town, unless you happen to catch your eye on a billboard, you don't know anything about Oe Hut. But you've got a builder in town that is building, developing mini lots for a long time and needs to tell people about it. Other towns decide that this is allowed as long as these signs are on private property, not city property, and that there are still lots available or homes available to sell. That's, that's why, or how long they let the developers keep these signs up, and where they let them keep them up. And again, the city is winning with all of the money the developer is spending on permits and construction fees and everything else, and sales tax. And thus they, you know, give the developer a nod because they're putting a lot of money in the community, so the city's allowing them to have off-site signage. So it's really about off-site signs. And then the third types of signs are the, the Wayfair-type signs. And that's, you know, been discussed a long time. And, and different cities have all kinds of different Wayfair signs. And so some of the points that I talked about were, if we have Wayfair signs available, who, who's going to be in charge of them? What do they look like? Who gets to put their company's information on them? Where are they located in the city? Are they, are they in the right of way? And, and obviously, you know, what do they look like? So those were the three types of signs that I had kind of given, been given direction to bring up to the group and start discussions on each one, so we could move forward or not on how we wanted to address these, not to redo the ordinances that we already have, but to add some specific language for these three types of signs so we can support businesses in the future. And one day, I hope to grow up and be as good at report writing as Richard. I don't think it'll happen.
Fine, first and then Eleanor.
Just a thought, it sounds like you've narrowed the scope of the project down to a pretty finite detail, Rich. I guess where I would want to go from here as a member of the commission is to see your recommendations in terms of what changes to our existing sign ordinance that you would make, at least for those three specific types. And then let us react to that. That'd probably be the quickest way for us to address this project.
Agreed. Need, really need some input, though, on, on feelings, since we've got a diverse group here on, on some of them. Because, you know, I could, I could put something out that's very business-friendly, and somebody else would say, yeah, you're, you're, you're making that too broad of a, of an opportunity for people to, to, you know, take advantage of.
Those A-frame angled signs are a real concern because we observed several of them downtown, and they're kind of just stuck out anyway in, in the pathway where people walk. Several of them had just had... had just handwritten sloppy things on them, nothing professional, nothing that would meet any kind of code. Um, and I think they could be useful to a business, but I think we need to give them some, some feedback on what is and is not acceptable as far as they're concerned.
Richard?
So I, I had a couple of comments and, and, uh, first, if I were to look for a city to use as a model for the sign ordinance, the city I would pick is Ocean Shores. We have a pretty good sign ordinance. Uh, um, uh, and yes, it can be tweaked, uh, but it's a really good starting point. Uh, the A-frame signs, uh, um, if, if they're not restricted about where they can be, as Rich has already said. So the person out there on, on Four Corners has sixteen signs down the green space on Point Brown. That's not what we want. So I personally think that A-frames need to be, uh, confined to, to your property, to the business property, uh, and that they need to be put away at night. I don't know if they are or not because I've never driven through town after business hours and paid attention to A-frame signs. I know that there's a half of an A-frame sign propped against the big cement monument outside of the bakery. And I fear that that goes kited away in the wind and kills somebody. Uh, and it's, it's, it's a handwritten, it, it, it just doesn't belong out there. Uh, um, so, so you have a response, Ken?
Well, so for example, let's, uh, I heard what you said. And so I'll say, let's, uh, I, I apologize, I can't remember, uh, James, James owns the Fund Center, uh, you know, back a block off the main drag. A, a, a business like James desperately would want to have an A-frame sign, and I'm making this up on the main drag to direct people to his business. So you're, uh, in, in your suggestion, that wouldn't be allowed, even though it's only a block away and helping him. So that's part of the A-frame discussion.
So my, may I? My response to that is, is again, I sent out a document that I think went out to everybody. Uh, and, and, and the first picture on that document was directional signs outside of the, uh, uh, information center. And there's one, the community club this way, and the other one says, I forgot what it says. Uh, but those are examples of directional signs and they're uniform. Uh, there's other directional signs as you're coming north on Ocean Shores Boulevard or south that said, that point towards where the community club is at. Those are standardized sign. And I wouldn't, I would think that, that all businesses, the senior centers interested in sign out on Point Brown, uh, as you said, the, 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 the Fund Center, the Oi Hut, uh, that if, if the city standardized those directional signs and then the, the business pays for those signs and pays the city to install those signs. And then we have a uniform sign that doesn't go blowing away in the wind. And, and that addresses off-site A-frame and onsite A-frame. I frankly don't care what that business does because I was in business myself and I had A-frame signs to tell people what I did specifically. Uh, and, and I think that that's an important form of advertising, but it doesn't belong out in the median.
So, and so with that, what I'd say is that, that I'll call those signs you just talked about, I'm gonna say Wayfair.
Wayfair, good for me.
And so I agree with what you're saying. So then we have to really focus on the Wayfair signs to allow those businesses that aren't seen very easily to have that because right now we don't have that ability for the most part, unless it's a nonprofit, which is why you see the, uh, community club up there. Uh, but that would then probably make a person like James be okay without not having an A-board sign on the main drag.
That would be my feeling, yes.
Don?
Uh, just, uh, can we get the material that, uh, uh, Rich referred to that we haven't seen yet?
Yes, I'll send you.
Yeah, and that will help us, Rich, uh, to, uh, react to what your recommendations are.
I apologize to Rich for not sending that.
No judging on my report style. I'm gonna send it to Richard next time.
Rich, it's all good. I, I'm bored. I, I, you know, and, and, and so, so, so this gives me something productive to do. So I have other comments on signs, if I may. And, and I've even forgot the other two signs that you talked about. You talked about A-frames.
Wayfair and real estate development.
Uh, uh, the real estate development, I think, still falls into that same category as Wayfair, I think. What I'm thinking of is there used to be a sign on Point Brown, and I think that's Tonquin going over the bridge towards Oi Hut. And it was a little tiny A-frame sign, uh, that said, Oi, Oi Hut this way. And I think that the same type of Wayfair sign that we've just been discussing would serve a much better function than that little A-frame. I worry about A-frames and somebody's in a hurry, it's close up time, and they leave the sign out and we get an eighty mile an hour wind. And that sign comes sailing through my windshield as I'm driving home at night. So, so I don't want, personally, I don't want A-frame signs that aren't at your business and aren't put away at night. Um, so that's my thought on that. Can I have some additional thoughts on A, on signs when it's my turn again?
Anybody else wanna talk or should we, Rich, go forward? Hey, Richard, you're up.
So Eleanor and I went out, uh, last Monday, uh, Monday a week ago, and, and we looked at signs. And our intent, at least my intent when we went, I think both of our intent is just to see what do we have? Uh, and, and how much is it in compliance or out of compliance with the existing sign ordinance? For me, it was a real eye-opener and I took, I think about a hundred and, almost a hundred and fifty photographs of signs. Some of them are duplicates. And it wasn't until I got home and put those signs on my computer that I really got to looking at them. And, and I reached the conclusion. And if you read the report that I sent out, the conclusion is, is, is I think that that report, I would like to send that report on, up to the city legislators, uh, because I think it's, it gives them an idea to start thinking about for next year when we're past COVID and, and it's time to start addressing the downtown business area. The business area has been a point of discussion for the five years that I've lived here. Uh, and, and so just very briefly, I'm not gonna go a long time on this. Rather than redesign downtown, if we just pressure washed and painted and fixed up the, 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 what do you call the, the edge of the house, the, the, uh, not coping the,
Facia.
The facia, that's what I wanted. It, it, there's a facia board, it's a red facia board on that market building where the gas pumps are at. I don't go in that building. I look at that building and I'm afraid that building's gonna fall on my head. There's a safety issue there. Uh, but, but my point is, is, is if we, the city of Ocean Shores, just cleaned up downtown, the discussion I keep hearing is what should downtown look like? Well, you know, we've spent fifty years making a downtown that looks just like what we want. It looks like a laid-back beach community. And, and that's why I, and I think the vast majority of people who have moved here, moved here. Uh, so with your permission from the rest of the commissioners, I want to send that document to the mayor and to Scott and to the rest of the city council. And, and no, it's not a this year agenda item for the council, but it is to, to prime the pump and start them thinking about, rather than talking about a fourteen million dollar sidewalk project, let's just clean up downtown and address those signs that seriously need addressing.
Richard, my, my thought on that is, as a citizen, you have the right to send anything out for.
Perfect.
Send it out as a planning commissioner because we often give it that fact. Well, and, and I would send it to the mayor and, and Scott and let them see if they wanna pass it to council. Council's confused at this point on the budget.
That's true.
And, and we can't even get them to talk about the comp plan.
That's true.
Well, I, I, it, it may be a little premature. It may be next year would be a better time to send it to them. Because they're, they're, they're slammed till the end of the year.
That, that's, that's true, but Scott, and Scott, this is not blowing smoke. I really feel his way. Scott's so squared away that if he gets it in his, in his inbox, uh, he will, he will pull it back out when the time is more appropriate. But meanwhile, I don't get it lost on my computer and have my computer blow up or whatever because I think it was a pretty good, pretty good product. Uh, and I think that it, that it focused a lot of attention that could stand being focused.
Okay, I, I agree with that. Like I said, I'd send it to Scott and the mayor and, and let them go from there. But now we need to get back on track.
Yes.
Uh, Rich?
Hey, Dan. Richard, I totally understand how you're feeling on that. As a business person that struggles with how much money to dump into facilities, I have one facility that's really nice and one facility that I'm not proud of, that I'm working to try to make better. But there's been a lot of times where you can't afford to make those changes. Or you're a renter and your landlord is a punk. And so Aberdeen has something called the Good Neighbor Fund. It has money in it. It's a one percent interest. And it's open to businesses that want to borrow that money to fix up their facades. How's that working? So ultimately, I don't know who owns that building that you're referring to. We all hate it. Just like people hate probably one of my stores that looks like crap in town. Uh, but ultimately, it's a free market. People are welcome to write checks as they, they want to. But to force people to clean up, it's impossible because I, I'll take you around the city of Ocean Shore. First, and show you some homes that I think should be fixed up, right? So I just, I don't know how you're going to walk that tightrope. Um, I know the suggestion is holistic and in good, good intentions, but it's really about the landlord and the building owner and, and, and where they have their value system.
I, I agree with everything you just said, Rich. Uh, and, and it's not my intention to force businesses. Uh, it is, uh, and I, I don't know how well the Aberdeen one percent fund works. In that document, I suggested that maybe the city, I don't know if there's, if that's legal, the city lent those businesses money uh, to, to fix their facades and, and clean up. Uh, and that's, as I send the document to Scott, he, he can, he, he and the lawyer, uh, Brent can work on that. Uh, um, and it's just my hope that, that, uh, businesses will say, on a Point Brown, we ran seventeen thousand dollars and hire somebody with a pressure washer. And that's all I have to say on the subject.
Okay, can we go back to signage? Anything more on signage? Craig?
Well, I just wanna reemphasize, I think the point that you made, Dan, to, to Richard. I, as a citizen, you're welcome to do whatever you want, but I, I don't, I don't want, I think you should eliminate back here in the back where it says, Richard Wills, Ocean Shores Planning Commissioner. Um, I don't think that's appropriate. I don't think this is a planning commission document.
And, and that was my question. Thank you.
I agree with that. You gotta do as a private citizen, which you have the right to do that.
Perfect.
I have a totally different reaction than you do to all these. I think you did a great job. Uh, but I have a totally different reaction to, to the way you, uh, to all these pictures. Um, but that, we're, we haven't gotten that deep into it yet. So the way I heard it was, uh, Rich is going to, um, go ahead and make a stab at modifications of the existing ordinances to address the three uh, types of signs that he brought up, and that'll be our springboard for dealing with, you know, modifications of the ordinance. And that we may very well make additional modifications, but at least what Rich gives us will be the starting point. Is that what everybody else heard?
Correct.
And what I'd really need though is, is input on each one of these focus areas. I, I wanna hear if, you know, one person says, well, like, like Richard said, I don't like A-board signs on the property.
I think we froze up, Rich. I didn't hear everything you said.
Sorry, am I on now?
Yes.
I, I need input on each of these different signs. Uh, Richard was clear that he'd rather have A-board signs just on his, uh, just on the businesses' lots. Other people might have other feelings. They might say, hey, if they're within two blocks, whatever it might be. I kinda need to have a point. I need your input on each of the three areas so I know how to move forward. Rather than me just doing what I want and then having you guys say yea or nay.
I like, I would rather hear what you want. You, you've got more invested in this. And I mean that sincerely. I mean, you've got the, you've got the ear of the business community and that's a good starting point for us. Uh, we do a better job reacting to something than we do just, you know, off the cuff, giving you our feedback. Um, I'd ra, at least I would rather see what modifications you propose, regardless of what your perspective is. I, I value your perspective. So I would rather start with that to get things going.
Okay, first, first Richard and then, and then Don, but we're gonna have to wrap this up because we're gonna hear about it.
So, a procedure question, uh, Dan, if you email all of us the document that Rich created and then if we then email Rich our response that he's just asking for, that I'm asking, that is not in violation of the, of the, uh, Open Meetings, Public Meetings Act, uh, because we're not having a meeting. Uh, you, you disseminated Richard's information and then I'm giving Rich my input. Uh, um, and if that's acceptable, that's what I would like to do is my next step to help Rich in his next step.
Well, we're allowed to have one-on-one conversations or two-on-one conversations with three people. We just can't have a quorum. So, yes, I, my opinion is we could send Rich your comments correct.
Perfect.
Hey, Don?
Uh, just, my question is, Rich, uh, a deadline for those comments to you to give you time to prepare?
I, I'm wide open.
Okay, I, I won't get it done today.
I feel that, yeah, I feel that the lighting ordinance is taking priority and, and this is, uh, second priority and, uh, we'll, we'll work this as quickly as we can based on input. So, you know, within the next couple of weeks is fine for me. I'm gonna be traveling, so I'll have time to go over some of your email comments.
Thank you.
I would think as quickly as you, you can. Let's not drag it out. Hey, Richard, one last statement and we're gonna move on.
So, so as, as simplified as Rich has made this, this sounds like it's just some small tweaks to the existing sign ordinance. Uh, um, and Rich, if, if I can be of help in what you're doing, I cheerfully offer that help. Uh, and, and, and it sounds to me like it might be possible, uh, within, within a couple of meetings, one or two meetings, to have given the city a tweak to the ordinance. Uh, and they can choose to adopt it or not, but it sounds like a pretty easy project.
I hope so.
Okay, anything more on this? Okay, I think we need to move on to, uh, parking. Don?
Uh, this is gonna, I'm sorry, this is gonna be fairly brief. Um, I had sent out some material, what's in the comp plan and, uh, some, some questions, thoughts. One of the things that I was looking for is to, um, uh, contain the scope of this project. Uh, and when I submitted it, Dan's response was to, uh, keep the scope within the, current downtown area and expand to others later on if, uh, if time permits. So, um, Scott, does that coincide with what the city is looking for in terms of, uh, how we scope this, uh, parking project?
Yeah, I can follow up on this, as, as can, and Rich can sort of second my thoughts. During the revitalization committee, this sort of economic recovery group, we discussed this as well. Uh, and various, you know, things that we would look at in terms of parking. I personally thought the best option, even though there would be a little legal hitch to it, um, that, that James, who owns specific paradigms, the mini golf course, was willing to donate that lot next to him to the city, um, if. if we would pave it for parking. And then he was even considering putting in in the summer months a trolley service that would take people to select three to four vintage points around the downtown. And I think this would be a huge win-win for the city's businesses if we were to be able to do this. There is like a slight legal hitch with the way that that property was originally obtained, but I think we can get around that. And, and there would probably be some wetland mitigation as a result of it, but I think that would be an ideal parking spot. We discussed the other lot behind Bennett's that didn't get a lot of traction in our economic revitalization recovery group in, in part because the, the convention center parking front lot rarely fills except for on events. And, and our business owners, at least the members of that group, weren't inclined toward that solution, but they really liked the, the solution that was proper by James West that would allow us to, to use that cleared lot. And Rich, I don't know if you had thoughts you wanted to, to back up on top of mine or other things that you recalled from that meeting?
Oh, I, I, I too am. I, I've heard the business owners, they want more parking. They want it towards, they want it off-street for obvious reasons. And I felt that you guys had a great plan and then the issues with wetlands came up. And I, I'm hoping that you guys are able to work that out with mitigation somehow. I, it's, it's just the way to go.
I think so too. If, if you, if the planning commission is in agreement, I will reach back out to the mayor and all to say that the planning committee, and I'm happy to draft something and send it to you as well. Would really like us to consider this option. I think the fact that James is willing to privately put in money, his own money, not only to donate that lot to us, but to create a trolley service that would stop at four points in the downtown that tourists could use in the summer would just be a big win for our business community as a whole. And if you are in agreement, I will draft something up, send it to you for your review. You send it back to me and I'll forward that to the mayor and we can start moving forward on that.
But I think we also had another citizen that was gonna donate some more land by City Hall as well.
Okay.
Richard?
So was James going to gift that property to the city or allow the city to use that property? Those two different things.
No, he was, he was gonna gift it to us. He was gonna gift it to the city of Ocean Shores. I mean, right now for him, it's to set up his wetland and he would love to have it as parking. Obviously, it's a huge benefit to him and he acknowledges that. And there's absolutely nothing wrong with that. You know, it's a benefit to him, but it's a benefit to the city to have that as a lot. And the, another nice thing about it is you can walk from there right to all the shops on Main Street, but also have a trolley service that would accompany that is terrific. So I, I just see it as a big win for our downtown.
That sounds awesome to me.
All right. Is it, is there material in writing that you can send me that I can kind of pull together for the commission?
There, there's not, either, there's not yet. We just sort of, well, James has talked about this before, but we just discussed this once again at the recovery meeting. He is gonna be in town, I think he said, next week or the week thereafter. And I'm gonna go meet with him. But like I said, I am happy to pull everything together, send it to the planning committee for review. You can read through it, I'll show exactly what we're, we're planning on doing. And then if you guys, if you all give it your certification, we'll take that to the mayor and we'll start moving forward on it.
So Dan, let me request that Scott go ahead and pull this together for us as he recommended and get it to us and we can give our blessing from there.
I'll work the plan.
Perfect, thanks, thanks, Donald, thanks, Dan.
Anything more on parking, Don? Okay. Planning Commission members' reports. Does anybody else have anything to report? Do we have any public comment? Either Marlene or Don Williams?
This is Marlene, I can't wave at you because I don't have a camera on.
Okay, like public comment?
I just wanted to say that I agree wholeheartedly about the education on dark skies. But I hope that you don't start from a scratch. Darksky.org has an incredible amount of information. I sent you a packet with some of their brochures and a couple of pages from their website. They have, they have just an incredible amount of information there. And I don't know, on public outreach, on education, on a sample letter to your neighbor, there's an incredible amount of education material on darksky.org. And so I would suggest using some of that. I don't know, if you've looked at the brochures I sent, I don't know how you translate a brochure into a website page, but there, you know, there are infographics on their website also in addition to the brochures. And I didn't know if, if you found those helpful or not. The other thing was that, I think it was Rich mentioned that it's a no-brainer to go with the new development. And my question there, one of the first questions when I first approached the subject with city council member offline was, well, what are you gonna do about where they buy their lights? And so part of this is where do they buy their lights and is dark sky lighting available to them? Or is, you know, will Ace, if Ace is where they get it, will Ace start selling them, whatever? So that's an aspect of implementation. I realize that's down in the weeds, but just something that crossed my mind because it was the first thing that somebody said to me when I handed them those brochures. I think that's about it for me, thanks.
Thank you. Don Williams, do you have any comments?
Oh, nothing, just checking in.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for our next meeting, hand is up to be the, take the notes. And our next meeting will be November 24th, 2020. We probably need to spend just a minute on, on how many meetings we're gonna have. The 24th is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. In the past.
I'm in the, I'm in the air that day. I'm literally flying to the Midwest, I'm sorry.
That's okay. What is everybody else's thoughts on that day?
I'm fine.
I don't know if I, I don't know that I'm gonna be here.
I'm okay with a meeting on the 24th, but that's, that leaves five of us. That's still a quorum if everybody else is coming.
I'll be there, Dan.
Dan, you're gonna be here? Okay. Then the other one that I, I would recommend we take off is the Tuesday before Christmas.
Yes.
We don't have that meeting. Everybody agree with?
I agree.
I can make that one.
You'll be lonely.
Okay. Anybody else have a comment? You wanna meet, not meet on the Tuesday before Christmas?
I guess.
What'd you say, Eleanor?
I said, I think we should just let the Tuesday before Christmas go.
That will do. So we have, Danny's gonna take the minutes next time.
Before we adjourn, I would like to say thank you to all of you for your input. My hope was to get some, some direction. And I appreciate what Greg had to say. Yes, I can get that in the weeds, but, but the weeds, there's a reason for the weeds and, and that's the foundation. But I really appreciate what everybody had to say and, and thank you so much.
Hey, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Okay.
Second, second, second.
We're adjourned. Thank you so much. And I will send out Richard's email right away as soon as I can.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, thank you.